Hey, Chinese Chelsea?
Yeah. It's hot.
It's hot.
It's hot. And then like they started to get a little warmer. Oh yeah. I didn't know that I couldn't have a jar.
I'm not supposed to breathe.
Uh, I don't know, like I put it in a jar like over the weekend after we ate some and then it started to get warm. So I usually keep on like with my gloves on top so they can breathe.
Breathe.
I know. And I gave the, I gave the other half to my brother-in-law. He took them with him. Yeah, he called me said, that's what he said, that's what.
The service stands out.
Executive session has been concluded. Participants in the executive session were.
Joel.
Michelle.
Phil Rico.
Karen.
Anthony.
Lester.
Craig.
Kim.
Heidi Garrett.
For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into the executive session occurred during the executive session or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, the next agenda item is continuation of item seven B. Motion on the change of ownership application filed by Trinidad Cultivation Services Incorporated at thirteen zero zero two, County Road twenty-six point two.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept and allow the change of ownership as described.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Any further discussion? All vote, please.
Benato?
No.
Grago?
No.
Lopez?
Yes.
Mateen?
Yes.
Miles?
I'm inclined to vote no. Um, and I'm gonna vote no.
Rico?
No.
May I approach and make a request for reconsideration on that? Um, I, I, or at least ask that you state on the record why you're voting no. Um, the record of the information before you is marijuana enforcement division conducted investigation, reviewed the same circumstances and facts that you have and concluded that this person, Sean Potts, has good moral character and has not been subject to any other disqualifications and has approved the license. The information that was before you and evidence before you was an explanation of what the prior criminal history was and an explanation of how it occurred and there's no disputing facts that would lead you to believe that he was lying. There's no disputed facts, there'd be questions of facts that, that should allow you to make any other decision other than what was presented before you by Mr. Potts. So on the record, I'd like to know how each of you voted. I know you guys voted no and why you voted no, so we can at least have a record as to why each individual board member voted no.
Case right off.
I, uh, on the record of Mr. Potts', um, his criminal record and his explanation of why, it wasn't to me, in my opinion, uh, I've seen a lot of criminal, uh, MDR reports, never seen many files.
May I vote?
Not yet.
Nope. Oh, I guess I'm next. Um, we didn't talk about this in the executive session, but don't we do findings when we address something?
Yes. Do you have any findings on this?
Well, no. We've done it in the past, is that we release them after the fact.
That's right. We do have time to do findings and, and we, we do have time to do findings. It, it is appropriate and you don't have to, but you can state your reason for, uh, your no vote on the record or we can simply do the written findings on later day.
Yeah, I'll just say Trinidad's code is not identical to the state's code and it's somewhat less specific, okay? That means it's not the same, okay? Uh, I share some concerns with Mrs. Grago, uh, but I'd like to go to some formal findings. Um, five years is a whole lot of time. I'm sorry. Uh, you know, if we're, everything had done prior to five years ago is a lot. I don't believe that so. Nope.
Well, if you check my records all the way through since marijuana sparked in the city of Trinidad, I have never, never voted yes on any, any marijuana. I don't care if it was a store, cultivation or whatever. That's my belief and that's what I stand by. I just believe that there's just a lot of uncertainties, you know, with some of his explanations, even though he was, seemed to be very forward in it. And I feel the same thing as Karen, as, well, as Miles. Uh, we just need to get some additional findings to find out what else there is and I just feel very uncertain with this application.
Okay, well, I can, obviously your city attorney will direct you as well, but when we're looking at moral character, and I understand what you're saying is that Trinidad may look at a little more broad, but obviously DUIs in and of themselves do not reach a bad moral character. Um, the state statute does provide that the strong public policy is to allow people to be rehabilitated and to allow the ability for them to be active participants in the community, which Mr. Potts has been since he's been here as a landowner and as a key badge holder of this business without any violations or any issues whatsoever with you folks or the police department of the town and of the city of Trinidad or anything else. So again, I, I, you guys are governed by standards and I believe the standard for denial is not met. I believe it'll be an arbitrary capricious decision. I understand concerns. If you voted no the whole time, I understand that. If you have concerns, I think the concerns, it's not that you give it the license and you never have an opportunity to address these concerns again. If evidence comes to you that does justify that Mr. Potts has not explained truthfully to you what happens, then you have an opportunity to address it at that time. Uh, you have an opportunity to also gauge on renewals to see whether or not he is a man of his word and will continue to operate Trinidad Cultivation Services the way it's been operated before without violations, without any criminal conduct occurring. Um, I just think that maybe your decision at this point in time to deny, um, is just not supported by the evidence, not supported by the law. Uh, when, when we look at rule one of six appeals is what this is, is you have the district court review of your decisions and there's a body of law on that. Uh, and I do agree with those who voted in support that the evidence is undisputed, if you would, of what occurred, how it occurred, when it occurred, in the limited period of time that it did occur and nothing has happened since. Um, so if there is a way to reconsider your decision, I would ask that, um, you do so just to, um, allow, uh, the evidence that's presented before you understand you want to make written findings of fact, but that's why I'm asking now to see what the reasons for denial are and not.
Let me ask, I've got a question for this. If we want to reconsider, can, and the other thing is if we reconsider, can we, because I remember going back a couple of years where there was a provision where it gave us thirty days to make that decision.
Correct. Correct. And I, I will say that there's, there's not a provision for reconsideration. There is thirty days for you to make your, your written findings or your, your written decision. Um, I don't think there's any reason why you cannot have a reconsideration of your vote, but it clearly needs to be in a public hearing, in a public context. I mean, it can't be done privately. Um, but, but I know of no reason why you could not reconsider your, your vote, but it would have to be noticed and posted and, and be part of a, you know, a, a meeting or a special meeting duly noticed or a regular meeting. It's a, it might work, of course, if it has.
May I? Please. I'm interested to hear. Yeah, no, and again, I think we do have a meeting right now. I think a meeting is being held at this point in time, a decision has been made. I think the motion for reconsideration is timely. Uh, for the reasons that I've, I've referenced, I do believe, I agree with the city attorney that there's nothing that prohibits you from reconvening, if you want, or reopening the case right now and making a different, or at least reconsidering the decision that you made.
Based on what you said?
Well, based on, based on what I've said about what is in the, the record, uh, yes. So essentially, basically, before you, I'm asking.
Okay, we were in there for forty-five minutes. I don't think five minutes or three minutes is gonna change our discussion. You're not pointing out anything we didn't discuss here.
Anthony, I had a.
Well, I was about to make a motion, but is there any other discussion?
Uh, again, sorry. May I approach for a second before you guys finish?
The hearing is closed. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so if you want to make a motion. The hearing is being closed, so.
Right, so I'm sorry, so public comment isn't.
No, yeah, public comment.
Sorry about that.
Okay, it, Mr. Mayor, I, I move that in light of the discussion by Councilor.
Statement?
Statement.
Statement, sir.
And on the advice of Councilor Downs, that we recall the, we call the matter for a second vote.
Okay. Tonight?
Right now.
My second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Call a vote?
I do. Um, what happened between there and here? Um, but it's your, your right to call the vote. Um, so let's go ahead.
And it will likely turn out the same, but, um, for whatever it's worth, in light of the information provided by council, I'd like to call a question.
I have a, I don't have a question, I have a comment. I understand what you're telling about me, about my obligation for the state of Colorado to be equal to that obligation, if not more than that obligation. I have an obligation to the citizens of Trinidad and for me not to speak out in a public hearing about what I've seen in Mr. Potts' application is on me, okay? I understand where you're coming from as an attorney and I do not appreciate it, but I'll play the game and we'll call a vote.
Thank you. There's a motion and second.
Any discussion? Call a vote, please.
Benato?
No.
Grago?
Reluctantly, yes.
Yes.
Mateen?
Yes.
Miles?
No.
Rico?
No.
So it dies. It dies. So the motion for reconsideration fails because it's, yeah.
Thank you.
This was a bad night for us, not for Andy Rusty, but we only have, a tie is a bad way for something to be decided. Is there a way to schedule a vote? We're all seven city council members. Can we reverse table this to get? I just don't feel comfortable with the top. I'm comfortable with four to two, but I'm not comfortable with the top.
Um, yes, it can be done. It's just a matter of if there's, you know, Mr. Statement needs to come back. We need to, again, notice it and have a hearing and it would be a hearing for a reconsideration. And, and the problem is that Councilman Goodall has not heard the evidence of this, so there would have to be a complete rehearing.
Well, I'm sure they'd be willing to. Well, yeah, I mean, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. No, and I, I tend to agree on a tie such as that. Um, I believe in my experience of dictating situations such as this, I believe if this is being videotaped or recorded.
Correct.
Then the other individual who's not here could have the opportunity to review the evidence by looking at the video and the recording and then make that decision.
Correct.
On a reconsideration, then to your point, if there is a reconsideration, then we'd have to, you know, you would have to be present, um, in some form to make the final vote.
Are we restricted as to the constraints of time and procedure?
It would need to happen, I'm sorry, let me interrupt. It would need to happen within three days.
We do have time, I think. Arrested me back a minute.
Right.
How can the council do this when in other times, with other tie decisions on the council? Nothing was brought up at that time.
Well, I'm, I'm responding to inquiries from, from council. I just asked you.
If I'm able to do that, I absolutely.
But, but if I could, nothing ever is resolved by a tie vote. And so it's resolved by an up or down plurality or majority vote, but not by a tie vote. So I think that's what council.
I'll just respond to your question. I mean, this is a, something that's very important and I don't think should be resolved with a tie. I mean, we've had things that had to do with lesser things than man's livelihood. Um, and I can only remember one, honestly, that didn't carry, and it was emotion and there were serious emotions. Uh, I think it was during the ethics hearings.
Okay.
But that was the only time I remember a tie.
That wasn't gonna be resolved by somebody else coming back. That was done because.
Everyone was here that could be here.
Right.
I think.
Well, it was because of reviews, what's that?
Right.
Anyway, move on.
And so, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would like to make a motion of.
Let's continue.
I, I, I think that to your point about responsibility to the citizens, we are confronted here with a very litigious situation and in honoring the responsibility to those citizens, we have a fiduciary responsibility to include Councilman Goodall.
I agree.
And we visit this. In, in the absence of that, we will have not acted in the best interest of justice and livelihood. And don't.
Those are my ideas.
The point, so I will, um, talk to Mr. Statement.
We will discuss this. I will make provisions for Councilman Goodall to watch this, to see everything, the, the packet, the letters of reference that came in, um, my memo, and we will, if council consents, we will, um, have a hearing and then permit Councilman Goodall to vote. And I think the first, it will be, first up will be another motion for reconsideration. That will be how, it will need to be done procedurally if there is going to be an affirmative vote to possibly undo the denial. Do you agree?
Uh, yeah, I think that makes sense.
Is this actually consistent with provisions of the stuff of the charter?
It violates no charter provision in any way that I am aware of. And I'm, I'm fairly confident there is no charter provision that would be violated by a reconsideration of a license application denial.
How do we, how do we catch Councilmember Goodall? I'll do the discussion that happened in there.
He won't be here, but.
I'll, I'll talk to him. I'll talk to him and I can have.
We recorded that, didn't we?
No, we did not, because it was, it was firm. So, and I, you know, so you don't have to rely on what I say. I can have Greg, Audra, anyone who was in there who was staff.
You can talk to him.
Right. But I, but we need to be careful because I don't want council to think that we're only having naysayers or people who voted no influencing Councilman Goodall in, in properly held.
I think it'd be best if you, if you would talk to him.
I think that's right.
And you, you'll, you'll.
I will. I promise I will.
Councilman Lopez is looking at the provisions of that, uh, see if there's anything in these, uh, charter. I don't think there is anything else.
Yeah.
Well, he's looking at that. Do we have to make a motion of any kind to?
Um, you can have it added to another agenda for reconsideration if you would like. I don't believe right now you need another motion other than to add.
But that can happen merely to your request.
Okay, right.
Would you, would you let me time to court date schedules and make all that happen?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And if I could, the next, anyone please correct me if I'm wrong, the next regular meeting of council would be October second.
Correct.
Am I right? Okay. So I would suggest tentatively that perhaps this matter could be set for that day if council agrees.
So we'll do this, we will, go ahead and set an order, set it up for the next meeting, if you would please.
And I will call you tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, I will call you first.
When Rusty coming back?
Twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, something like that.
Together with you, five days to after.
Five days to. So, sorry. Okay. Thank you and I do understand all of your concerns and points and thank you for understanding mine as well. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to, uh, line eight, Ms. Wayne's Business, which is two thousand nineteen property casualty and workman, workers compensation insurance renewal through SIRS, but I have a motion, please. Have a second?
Second.
Steph?
Mayor and City Council, we received the annual renewal call from SIRS. We've been a member of SIRS, that's a governmental pool for, it's well over twenty-five years and, um, typically what we, we've been seeing is decreases in our premium. We sure we've realized, um, an increase in the premium. I would attribute it probably primarily to, um, our large, very large hail damage claim that we have. Um, we haven't had an, an excessive number of other claims, so, um, I'm sure it goes back to that very large hail claim. Aside from that, um, you know, we have acquired newer vehicles. We recently purchased a new fire truck that's very expensive, um, several police vehicles. We have properties that, um, would, would be realizing an entire year's worth of premium at this point as well. For instance, the Public Works facility and different, different properties. And so I think the increase is probably a justified increase, especially based on the, the impact of our loss experience, um, but definitely SIRS has been great for the city to be a member of. I would recommend renewing through SIRS.
Audrey, how do? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Discussion, Mr. Mateen.
I would defer to you quick. I want to know how much of it. You're the insurance lady.
That's right. No, how do, how does SIRS rate life, life auto liability? Do you, do they give you a schedule or how do they determine our rate on auto physical damage liability?
Versus liability?
Would be comprehensive collision.
Um, you know what, the, literally what we give SIRS is account of our vehicles, what type of, um, vehicle they are, for instance, truck versus an emergency vehicle.
Okay.
Um, buses or trolley, replacement value, that's all they have. They don't maintain our schedule with it.
Okay.
But they know of the age of the vehicles?
Um, they know the value of the vehicle, replacement value.
So do, so across the board, all the automobiles in the city, do they recover, full coverage?
Yes.
Does that some, I mean, I'm just trying to help out with, with the gradient increase and then on the, on the dwelling, um, not the dwellings, I mean, personal.
Replacement value less depreciation. They, we, we do, they do factor in depreciation. Yes.
So you got, so when they did the re, the settlement on all the hail claims that we had for city buildings, they didn't pay for the full replacement cost of those roofs?
Property, they did though.
Okay, so then you do have replacement costs. I'm just trying to figure out if they give us a chance to look at the value of the buildings we have to see if they're insured to value or do they do that?
They do that.
Okay.
We have a full appraisal that was probably, oh, I want to say they came in and did one in twenty fifteen on all of our properties and contents.
Okay. I was looking at our deductibles and our deductibles for commercial property is really low. I mean, we're covering the buildings for a thousand dollars. That's almost unheard of, um, even.
But it's rolled into property and casualty. So if we have any sort of a claim, we have a sewer backup, we have any sort of a claim, that's our deductible. It's a thousand dollars per occurrence. And so, um, we've had SIRS quote, a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible in the past and based on then the numbers, so, you know, an additional fifteen hundred dollars for ten claims, the money just wasn't there.
It wasn't, it wasn't.
It didn't make practical sense for us to go to the higher deductible.
I just didn't know if you've ever, you know, checked into that. If you look at the total, well, there's a couple of factors and Greg and I talked about it today. We've got the box leader, we've got the new fire truck that's coming in that's gonna be hefty to insure. We have the new bucket truck coming in that's gonna be hefty to insure. So I thought that maybe if there's, with some cost saving factors in there that we could use, it would be good if it's per, if it's for liability and, and, uh, coverage on the property, it wouldn't make any, any difference. If you look at the total premium including loss experience and lot of credits, if you look at that, the workman's compensation policy has decreased every year and it's made up for the, the, the property and casualty has increased every year. But what happened is that four eighty-one on property and casualty this year, the workman's comp decrease couldn't make up for that increase. So that's where we're at. What's bad about, I didn't know how SIRS operated. I've heard about it for years and I looked onto their website and tried to find out some information with it, but their, their, the retention on, on, uh, real estate went from half a million to a million. So that accounts for part of our premium increase. And what's bad about being in a cooperative like this, because of that hundred and forty-two thousand increase on property and casualty, that's steeped wide. So because Colorado Springs and Denver and the big metro areas got huge losses, we have to pay the prices. But, but, there's always a but, the benefits always outweigh.
I hear the interest.
Yeah, really.
So, ma'am?
Sure.
So my question was, the, uh, the hailstorm occurred in twenty sixteen, why didn't we see an increase like this one in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen?
Because we're in a pool.
Right.
So now you've got the damages, the, the Trinidad hailstorm wasn't as destructive as the Colorado Springs and Denver hailstorms of the past two years. So we're clumped together.
So does that mean we may see a drop in prices next year or for twenty twenty?
Well, look at, look at history on here.
We have had some drops, but that was for workman's comp.
Right. And that's because the city has a very decent, um, safety record, but if you look at property.
Probably had one drop right there in twenty seventeen from twenty sixteen. Not by much, but by two thousand dollars.
No, that's the impact of the loss experience. That's the surcharge. This is the premium.
Ah, okay. All right, that, that was my question. All right. That, that was my question. I didn't know if, like, we were playing catch-up for, since we had a lot of repairs done even into this year, like at the recreation center, you know?
Yep. All of our main perumes are, are done this year.
The library just got done. Okay.
Yeah. And they actually, SIRS finally paid, um, that depreciation difference this calendar year. So.
Okay, that's, that's all I have, ma'am.
There's none?
No, I just put these people going.
Like, if I actually talked to SIRS, I'd say, you know, she'd stand quite.
I think Audrey's as tired as I am. No question.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. There's no further discussion? Please call a vote.
Benato?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Muttan?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Yes. Item nine B, resolution, appointing members of the Board of Directors of the Business Improvement District. Motion, please. So, move. Have a second? Second? Staff, please?
Yes, good evening, mayor. Members of council, Tara Marshall, Development Services Director. So, we voted a little bit earlier this evening to form a Business Improvement District. The next step is adopting the resolution, appointing five board members. The proposed board members are Gerald Chino, Mr. Jay Chino, Gina Chino, Gary Feniman, Tim Lamb, and Mr. Carl Gabrielson. Mr. Gabrielson remained behind to represent the board very patiently. And each of these proposed board members has provided an affidavit stating that they meet the requirements to serve as the board. So, the first, and one of the main reasons we want to go ahead and adopt a board immediately, is they will become effective in ten days on Friday, the twenty-eighth of September. If we don't appoint a board, then you're the board, and you'll be responsible for holding the election. So, I would highly advise, from a staff perspective, that we, that we adopt a resolution and we propose the board, thereby making them responsible for holding the election, which will happen in November. That will be one of their responsibilities. The second is, by state statute, they must deliver to the city clerk's office no later than September thirtieth, so that's a Sunday. So, this year it'll be Monday, October first, their budget and operating plan for the next year, for twenty nineteen. We have up to thirty days, somewhere between thirty days and December fifth, to review that. So, once we get that, staff will review it, we'll go through any questions that we have, and we'll present that to you. And sometime before December fifth, council will approve the operating plan and budget for next year. Do you have any questions? For myself, Mr. Gabrielson's here, if you would like to query him.
Excuse me? Any questions?
I do not.
Karen?
No.
No, sir.
Thank you for your patience, Carl. It's been a long night for you.
It has forever.
The only question I have is, I know they want to know is, and you'll probably let them know, Audra, as to when they'll, where and when they'll, where it will occur after this. I guess you let them know when that'll occur?
Where what will occur?
Yeah, because that can be sworn in according to the information that was in our packet.
Yes. So, once we approve the board tonight and adopt the resolution, they will become effective on Friday, the twenty-eighth. It will be necessary for the Board of Directors of the Business Improvement District to meet. They don't have to meet at a specific location. I, I may query Mr. Gabrielson about when or where that will happen, but they will meet on the twenty-eighth. Their attorney, um, from Spencer Fane, is completely aware of that, and he will be meeting with them, and they'll be discussed first being sworn in, and second, being approving the election materials, and third, they will then discuss their operations plan, which will be due on Monday. So, we're right up against that deadline.
There's no further discussion on the matter? Call a vote, please.
Benato?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Muttan?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes. Item nine C, resolution for approval of findings of information utility metering, infrastructure improvements to the city of Trinidad and financing such improvements in accordance of twenty-nine dash twelve point five, one oh one, five CRS. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second? I think, um, on this particular case, there's not a second. I think we'll have to, um...
Have to change the motion.
We'll have to change the motion to die, and probably have to table it, because we are requesting some additional information, and we'll understand. Is it worthwhile to have a public discussion on this?
I'm not sure I understand what you're doing.
If someone's second, we can at least have a discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Second, second purpose of transparency. Get a touch of this, staff, your discussion. Please, like, first and a second.
Yes, and do I vote a lot?
No, 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 discussion, discussion. Do you have any discussion points, discussion?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be quiet for tonight, so I'm just.
I have some, you know, one of my pet peeves is to be given a bunch of information and told to hurry up. And there's always a reason for it, and it always seems to make sense in the circumstances, and I often go along with it. But I think this is a bridge too far. And we've got a lot of complications in here. The numbers are still not there. We don't have the proper itemizations. And number three, I share a concern about fairly complicated financing documents that need to be signed by the twenty-seventh. I mean, these are not just straightforward bank loans. I mean, these involve performance guarantees and measurements of savings. I've seen some of these contracts. And frankly, I can't go forward, I can't walk down that alley without having been through two or three drafts of those agreements, or without at least having seen them before our meeting tonight. I can't agree, I, I just think it's premature, and I'll leave it at that. It's a long.
I like the idea of us being able to upgrade our infrastructure and gas meters and water meters and all that, but when our city staff is given information a day and a half to two days before our meeting here, when they don't have ample amount of time to review it all, I would like to get a little bit more time to review that with our staff and get the better feedback versus, I mean, how many pages were in the packet? Quite a few. I, I, I would like a little bit more time just to review that. If we could have an additional couple of weeks, I would appreciate that, just so we could ascertain more of the details in this particular recipe.
I agree with Carlos, and, you know, after looking at that finder that Mike has, and the questions we all have, I don't want to make a decision tonight without getting clear, concise answers to the questions.
We're considering expenditure of several million dollars over very lengthy time, and we need to be very deliberate about our calculations, and it's appropriate to delay acting on this second. Right? So, we probably need to get an amendment to the motion.
I'd like to submit an amendment that we await further detailed information, itemized information from Johnson Controls, uh, in order to make a more well-informed decision on behalf of our future constituents and those living now today in Trinidad.
That's my comment, look. Okay, any discussion on that?
Well said.
All vote on that, please, an amendment?
Benato?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Muttan?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes. Do you need to have a vote on the regular resolution on that? Not really. Not really. Item D, resolution for purpose of entering the city of Trinidad into art space, Trinidad GPL, city of Minnesota, based general partnership, that will be the sole owner of the space to create Trinidad Project.
We would ask that you table that.
Motion to table. Motion to table. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All vote, please.
Benato?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Muttan?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes. Item nine E, approval of an operating agreement for the MD normal art space Trinidad GPL, see between the city of Trinidad and Art Space Projects Incorporated for the purpose of operating the space to create Trinidad Project. I think that was also a recommendation.
I would ask that you table that.
Table. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a vote, please.
Benato?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Muttan?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes. Item nine F, consideration of equipment purchase for the new quid ladder truck. Do I have a motion, please?
Oh.
Second?
Second.
If you could just designate the requests that comes out of the marijuana sales tax, because the truck is coming out of there, so the truck came in at a door was below the budget. That's all.
So, do you want?
Authorization payment of it, of the marijuana.
So, the authorization for it to come out to the marijuana trendy. Chief?
Yes, you have any question?
Any questions for me?
We don't think we saved some money?
Not like we did.
That sounds good to me.
We waited all this time for what?
How'd it get there?
How'd it, where's it out, and how'd it get there?
Um, right now, I saw pictures this week. They've got the ladder mounted on the box. They're finishing up the box. The pump is installed. It should actually be completed by the end of October. But at that time, it will be going to, because it is classified as a dealer demo, that's why we save so much money, it's going to a trade show first. And we should be receiving it in, right around the middle of December. And I'm still trying to find out what trade show they're going to.
Maybe they just put you on there.
You know, I don't think we got a.
Is it painted with Trinidad Fire Department on it?
Yes.
Cool.
It's gonna have.
Had a trade show?
On the, on the ladder itself, there's two panels. It's gonna say Trinidad Fire Department. Then it's gonna have a patch on the doors.
And there's the filthy island.
Yes, say in Tobago, Tobago.
We didn't get a, we didn't get a motion on that yet.
Do we get?
I guess we did, I wish.
Mr. Sun, can the chief call? Well, that's pretty chief.
Look at the, any other discussion on that?
No.
Call a vote.
Benato?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Lopez?
Yes.
Muttan?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Grago?
Item ten, council reports, Mr. Benato.
I just have one thing to say about the Ardo Cave down there this past weekend, or whatever it was. It was a great sight to see so many people down there and so many cars, and, you know, it was pretty exciting. And Mr. Woods does this for us every year, so that's, that's all I have to report. Three go up, three down, Bill Keir, American, Alan Cloud.
The last two weeks I spent a lot of it on vacation. I enjoyed myself.
That's true.
We're having a, a board meeting next week, next Thursday in Lamar, on ARPA, and we, we may or may not meet or may not get some relaxed pricing from our state.
Um, I'd like to let everyone know that the Human Services Advisory Board is having an open house at Trinidad State Junior College this coming Monday from three thirty to six thirty PM, so people can get more information about the particular programs for skillset building for a particular specific niche and educational nuance that's coming to Trinidad State Junior College. So, please, if you can attend that, the board members will be there to educate those about the particular curriculum for accreditations and also potential associate's degree in this particular form. Also, the pizzeria is doing well, and the youth club is doing great as a result of it. Hopefully, we'll be able to gain some more financial revenue generating for the clubs, that way, in the future years, someone else can be fortunate, as the youth club has been, in order to attain city funding to help them get off the, on a good start, like we have been fortunate to do so as well. Lastly, I also attended the Ardo Cave parade. I thought it was great. The Cardango event was, seemed to be well-attended as well, and a big kudos to Rodney Wood and his crew for putting on another great activity for our community here in Trinidad.
In about twelve hours, Eric, Tara and I will be back here for our tourism one meeting. But what the Tourism Board has decided to do for regular meetings, we meet here at City Hall and then for work sessions, we go down to the welcome center. And it's very interesting, because we, we, the Tourism Board's been able to put some input as to what improvements we want to make. That's all I have.
I have, I have a report, a couple of suggestions, you know, for consideration in the future meeting agendas, of reports from Monument Lake, other new ones. I'd be very happy to hear detailed information. Don't come down here and tell me it was nice, when we make our request of what we expect of you. Ardo Cave, great thing, the thing over with the Blues Fest, lots going on, a lot going on. We have myriad projects happening in the city of Trinidad. And maybe we're, have so much happening, we don't have a proper handle on things. We need to think logically about what we're doing, and make sure that we don't spread ourselves so damn thin, that we don't get any justice done to that, which we hope. You know, I, I kind of have a, a matter of fact, I mentioned this, I think to Tara some time back, that maybe we need to have work sessions separate from our regular meeting, where we bring forward all of our projects that we have, just for discussion, just, just to, so we can be all aware of what's happening with all these projects. And so, I'm, I'm interviewing them over there. Also feel that the Ardo Cave was a tremendous success for our community, so.
Can I have one more thing? I forgot. Um, I actually went by the golf course yesterday and noticed that the completion of the concrete pad has been implemented, along with the electrical conduit and all the piping that they needed for proper tent, um, adhesion, is that a proof, adhesive?
Adhesion.
The adhesive to the ground.
Sticking.
Where they stick it. Um, it, it looks beautiful. It really turned out phenomenal, and I think it's gonna be another great attribute to the golf course, where they can have venue-appropriate parties and such, so wakes or whatever the enforcement may have.
Don't mean to belabor the point, but one final thought. Some time ago, we, we talked about renaming a street up there.
Correct.
Did that, we never acted on that?
That has gone before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I believe it should be coming before council.
The petition will be kind of canceled.
Okay, 'cause I had an idea the other night, when I went to a high school football game, and I was at school, and when that happened, the Dutch no-go field at Minor Stadium, yada, yada, yada. How about the Franklin Azon Municipal Golf Course in Trinidad?
We'll be bringing.
And leave the street alone. Just a suggestion.
We'll be bringing that for, for council to discuss. Planning zoning has studied it just.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't need to complicate it, but thank you.
You are welcome.
Reports, city manager. We, in order to do the history Colorado grant, we have to file a preservation easement to the building, and it protects the exterior of the building. And they recommend, well, they, they require that it be held by a qualified entity. A qualified entity is the Colorado Historical Foundation. And do you have any problem with sending them a letter of intent to do that? The actual easement is a fairly lengthy document, but we have to work on that immediately. Some of the things we gotta fit in there is, we might protect the outside of the building, but we still have to put in an elevator. So, we have to figure out how to handle ADA issues that need, that work with historic building. So, that's, that's gonna be a little bit of, some language in the contract. So, send that if, if somebody has an objection. The, based on what we're getting for applications for the marijuana sales tax, I think the policy needs to be addressed again. The minimum, or the maximum amount of grant has now become the minimum amount of grant. And so, people are asking for it, the twenty-five thousand, regardless. And I don't know as we're doing a lot of due diligence as to why they need to have twenty-five thousand dollars. But I, I think that at least needs to be looked at.
You know, could we, like I said, we talked, I mentioned about maybe bringing, like you said, bringing all of our events that we got going on, and this particular aspect, do you feel like maybe a retreat would be the best way to handle and talk with these items, something that's gonna feature?
It's hard, I know it's difficult for you, but I'm not sure what would be the best timing to handle, in such a short period of time, a work session, to handle those type of things. That's a, that's a thought.
I would be opposed, maybe trying to plan one out for the spring of twenty nineteen, where we can have enough time after the holidays and.
Just wanted to point out that.
I, no, no, my spring's cold here, too.
But that might have to be where we could start.
Yeah. I, I think a retreat's not a bad idea. It's good to kind of like come back to the table, where we can all sit there and lengthy amount of time, go over these things, which we've done before. I think we've done it successfully.
Is it a retreat or just a little work session?
That's what I'd be up here.
If we're gonna redefine Trinidad and envision it, I'm, I'm not the biggest fan of all of that. But if it's just a long work session, I, you know, I'll work it out. It'd be great if it didn't happen during Christmas week, you know. And then, also had a conference call the other day with a representative of the Economic Development Administration and our application that we put in a while back was the pre-app, now we gotta do the real app. And it sounds like all the things that they're asking for, we're gonna be lucky if we get this thing submitted by the end of October. And if you submit it after the first week of the month, then it gets held up for an additional month before you consider it. So we do not have the grant yet for the sewer transmission line and as I said, if we can get the application in before the end of October, they would consider it before the end of November. So this is starting to draw out a little bit. And it's, they were naming our federal funds, or federal forms just left and right the other day, so it's gonna take some time to get through all these things. That's it.
That's it. Mayor, how's it?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. First of all, I want to make sure everybody knows that we have two new judges in the Third Judicial District. The new Bruce Billings is a gentleman by the name of John Mochell, M-O-C-H-E-L. And he, but I won't elaborate, if you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to tell you about them. The new Claude Pell, the district court judge in Werferno County, is Clay McKissin, who was the county court judge in Werferno County. So we'll be, the committee will be meeting again soon to fill the vacancy created by Clay McKissin.
Well, Greg, please down.
Oh, no, wait, 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 wait.
We recognize.
I have one more, I'm, I was gonna do that, you stirred my thunder. I know, but I'm always last. Lastly, I will be sending to you, so this is exciting, try and contain yourselves, sample ethics codes for various. So you can look at some of those when you put the council on it, you know.
If I can, just one second, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to ask the council here is that, you know, about three weeks ago, Mrs. Buckle passed away from, from cancer and that's Dan, is Eddie's mother-in-law. And I, I think it would just be a nice gesture if we could, we could kind of either get her a card, give Dan and his family a card and a compliment or something, you know, I, I don't, I don't think we reconsidered that.
If we did, that would be okay. So, yes, okay, so we could do that.
Good, so just, just ethics codes, I will be sending ethics codes to you and one that I was asking you pay particular attention to is delengos. That is an ethics code that also has a code of conduct, just so you know, the, the majority of them do not. And that is all I have in terms of business. We have a birthday today.
Who my dad is?
So it's Greg's birthday and, how old are you?
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one, sixty-one. So I think a song is in order, I don't know what is tradition here in America. Just kidding. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
You should have rehearsed this, you should have said happy birthday.
That motion was due, please. So, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.